Please send it to your discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Have you prepared this dress? Oh, guest presentation. Oh, we've got the sheriff here. The deputy sheriff. Come on out.
You get the court. I'm up, okay?
Oh, so everybody that does not know, this is Corbin Collins. He is our second people bay deputy. His shift is Wednesday through Saturday. And Casey, who you've already met, is our other alternate. So we've got double the trouble here at people. So, okay, Corbin, if you have a seat. What they usually do is if they have any questions or want to make any comments. He's throwing that, it looks like Casey's throwing pork hoes into the walls tonight.
Go easy on me, please.
Nice to meet you. Nice to have you here. And how's things going out there on the streets?
I love it. It's good.
It's good?
There's traffic and...
That's crazy.
That's crazy.
Yeah, it's traffic and traffic.
Yeah. Oh, before the questions for our deputy? Yes, Bill?
I'm just looking at the report and there seems to be an awful lot of 911 calls coming from the CenturyLink building.
Yeah, I can answer. So I've actually been with that. Every so often, for whatever reason, bill people call 911 on themselves. Eddieville Charter School, the Sluts Valley Clinic. I don't feel like I knew some of those, those two. For whatever reason, the phone system they have just calls out. And the first couple, I went up there just to make sure nothing was going on. And then I found out that it was a, is it a spectrum building? Is that what it?
CenturyLink.
CenturyLink, yeah. So I've spoken with Kim about it. And I don't know if she's reached out to them yet, but it's...
I'm emailing Jenny right now.
On the list of things to do. I haven't had one come through this week that I know of, but they come in at random times. We don't do anything with them anymore. We just clear them off. But that's what those are all about.
Any other questions?
Yes, and I also, this is on the report, there was two hit and runs. Was that involving people, cars, property?
It depends. I've taken a hit and run. It's, one of them was for a property damage across from a shelf. There's like median signs. Someone that hit those in a run. There's no injuries. The other one, I'm not too familiar with the hit and runs, so.
These are two?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I can't recall what the other one was either.
Can you remind us what the blue coating that...
Can you have that?
Is... The blue, I think, uh, let me get to us. Oh, it's email. Okay. The red is out of town, I know. The blue, I'm not sure.
Looking for...
We can find out.
Yeah, it was a first sergeant's mail.
Email from Sergeant Bill, I think, is what Ken has as a key for it.
So how many tickets do we issue? Well, it depends. I can't tell you that on average. Personally, I'm not the one who tickets everybody. I think the conversation is more than taking money out of somebody's pocket. So, but if he doesn't, then he is, so.
So, this, the blue highlights, this is when there's activity in people bay by deputies outside of Casey and Corbin's house.
Okay. I have a quick random question for you. How did the incident on the bridge end up that I summoned you for?
I think fine. But there was, it was definitely, it was a squirrel.
Okay, there was a jumper, the squirrel trying to cross one, and went in the middle of the bridge and the traffic is... So I put blinkers on and I knew he was down there.
Yeah, I would have when I stopped and I tried to help them and we couldn't see him and they were just driving off. As they were driving off, I saw this squirrel. I don't know what happened to this squirrel, but it was on the bridge.
We died.
So. It ended up in the engine block, everything I know about.
Thank you, by the way.
Yeah.
I hope I wasn't inappropriate.
No.
I'm gonna hail you.
No, you brought my attention to someone who was stuck on the bridge. I mean, that's the hazard itself, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Did you have any comments for us?
No, it's good to meet you guys. Put a face to the name, so hopefully you'll see me more around here.
Love it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, if you learn, we're not so scared. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Have a good vacation, Corbin. You will be on vacation for a few days.
Okay, now, get your chairs.
Hello, everybody. So, emergency affairs, we have a meeting because I saw you last. Michael Dane was, was going to speak to us, but he was unable to make it. And so we're going to reschedule now. He was coming in to give radio training to our barrel holders who, you know, asked for it and it would be really terrific if they had better training. As to some of the things he wanted to tell them is just when you have an event, listen instead of speak. Because if you speak, there's too many speaking and nothing really happens. So in his place, he had Michael Tomlinson come. Michael has talked to us before. He's in Little Well Cove and they really are, I'm so impressed with their emergency preparedness program. And he talked us about their zones and we've had talked about that before, but they have like, I think, 20 zones and they have captains. And if there is a emergency, it sort of goes out to the captains, who goes out to the, to the people that they're responsible for in different neighborhoods. And he said that they were so believing in the radio program that even the people that come in to Little Well Cove, well, they would in extensive walk and talk. You know, just to say, this is, you know, this is really going to help us if there's an event. So I was really impressed with that. And so we rescheduled Michael, Michael Dane to come in. We are about the sixth month part of our emergency barrels holders. We are giving to our, scheduling inventory of the barrels, just to make sure that they understand what's still there and make sure they're in good shape and they're in a safe place. So we'll be doing that. I also have done some research on the gift to Brady regarding lots. Right now, we have lots on our caches, our storage unit, as well as the one here out at City Hall, but they're really hard to get get into. They're rusty. It's really hard to maneuver them to even get into the caches. And so I've been doing some research on regrade lots. So I'm going to give it to Brady to see what he thinks, what he thinks about possibly changing the type of lots that we have that would be a little bit easier to get into. We also are, we've been talking, our committee a lot, about a program called Be Two Weeks Ready. I think that I've mentioned that to you guys. This is such a good program.
What's it called, Jay?
It's called Be Two Weeks Ready. It's from the state of Oregon. And it's an emergency, um, emergency part of the government. And the particular program has eight different types of discussions. And it's the same that you would expect, like, you know, shelter, food, water. And in this particular program, it also gets into different activities. If you look at the book, it gives you ways to chart information. It gives you information about how to turn off electricity and what have you. So we want to get this out to the community. It's a really good program. We had mentioned in the last meeting that we're looking to have smaller meetings instead of having like one, where you have like one lecture. And if we have smaller meetings, we've dealt with that, it would be more intimate and more discussion. And I went to a meeting in Walport on Saturday and it was really successful because they had these binders and so they could talk about them and they could like, you know, it's interesting lecture today. It was a really, really good way to do it. So when we start our scheduling our next events, we're just going to have small intimate things where people can actually go through this like page by page and I think this is a better way to do it. So that's in our, on our agenda to do. And, um, I think that's probably all that I have. But we're on the meeting again. And I think first Monday and second Monday in December. And we're looking forward to the new year. Any questions?
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. And we'll be, I'm talking more about this and would love to get these in your hands too, you know, when we can...
Do you remember the website that they can get those off of?
You know, the only way to get them is to go through Kayla Thompson with the OEM. And so with this particular program, I mean, I can order them once we have something scheduled. But she will give you like the toilet bucket. She'll give you like a washing machine bucket and what have you. She gives you a couple of paper boxes and they have turned into solar ovens. She's just got some wonderful ideas. And this particular program comes with a whole bunch of different ideas. It's not just that these wonderful books. But I wish I had a book for everyone, but the only way to get it is to, you know, come to a presentation. And I'd be happy to even just give the presentation to city council, city staff, you know, if y'all would like to do that. But we're trying to gear up to make sure as many people as possible have this information. Good progress.
So when's the next meeting?
The second Monday.
December?
Yeah.
Oh, what time?
Second Monday of December.
What time is that?
Uh, it's at 3:00. Yeah. Anyway, we're just trying to get the word out as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, did you want to update us on the advisory committee?
No, you can see the last report too, which are, we're going on the grant. And so we, we are not going to have the November meeting, which is the week before Thanksgiving. Or the December meeting, which is the week after Christmas. So those two meetings will be happening next week. We won't expect to hear anything from the state until probably February at the earliest. If we're lucky, we'll hear something in January, but I'm not sure that would be good news. That's the report. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Harbor? Any updates on the harbor commission? I don't see anybody. Okay, planning parts and rep, I don't see there. Bee, did you have anything on the salmon?
Yes, I will, okay.
Okay.
Of course, from that, depending on when until the start of next month, salmon enhancement's been pretty dormant. Personally, I have not heard of seeing of any fish going out either creek. That's a mean it didn't happen. Normally, when there's a return, there's a little bit stunner showing seals at the base of the dam at the pest guard station. We did, you know, last year have problems with that single-celled parasite. We lost a lot of fish. There was a frequency length chart that came out from our biologist here recently. Last 10 flipping, it was the smallest fish we've ever grown. And our meeting dentist reminded me that the meeting's next Monday. You know, have to retool, rethink what we're going to do. We did some improvements on the baskets and everything like that. But some of those fish are things that, you know, for two to three years, they're out in a black hole and you never know what they're going to be. Kind of like this.
Yes, absolutely. Any questions for Bee? Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, I'll open the floor for public comments. Just Mr. Menstrin, this is you.
I know, but he was, he wants public comment too.
You too. So you two can, you two have, whoever one wants to come up first.
But these are for items not on the agenda.
Right, these are for items not on the agenda.
Hi, Peter Ethrich from People Bay. I know the lighting issue is on the agenda and I appreciate that very much. One thing I didn't see on the agenda were the other nuisances that were supposed to be amended. Are you doing those tonight?
No.
No.
Okay, so with that in mind, I have a letter from someone in the neighborhood and I have permission to be able to see the city. And I'd like to read most of it. Because this concerns not only ourselves, but our entire neighborhood. And it's the we find that the nuisance ordinances are not adequate and need to be updated and as soon as possible. So I'll start with this. To whom it may concern? I moved into a home in the F-Tide Estates area summer of 2025 to care for an elderly family member. I lived there full-time and worked from home. Shortly after moving in, I became aware of neighborhood concern regarding Mr. Phillips' behavior and the cul-de-sac of Pine Court. Over the course of the next few weeks, I witnessed on many occasions what I would describe as obnoxious behavior from Mr. Phillips, such as loud singing, dancing in the street, pointed messages written in chalk on the street, and flashing lights. While walking, I often crossed paths with Mr. Phillips, who was pleasant towards me. Because of this, not wanting to put myself on my elderly family member in the crossfire, I chose not to involve myself in the neighborhood conflict regarding Mr. Phillips when possible. However, things escalated on the afternoon of Wednesday, October 8th. I was working from home and heard a commotion in the cul-de-sac. Looking out the window, I could see Mr. Phillips bring his park bench within 10 feet of Mr. Edgar's property line and begin taunting and intimidating Mr. Edgar and his wife while they were working outside their home. I recorded the event from my window, concerned that things would escalate. Eventually, the police were called and the following day, Mr. Edgar was granted a temporary no-stalking order against his folks. Since then, Mr. Phillips has continued his obnoxious behavior from his home, such as loud music, loud yelling, and singing that can be heard from streets away and the flashing lights. This behavior is disruptive and in no way contributes to a resolution to the conflict in the neighborhood. It's unfortunate that this situation has escalated to the point of needing involvement from law enforcement. But it is clear a logical and rational resolution is not possible nor desired by Mr. Phillips. We need your help. This is not me saying that, this is the neighborhood. Intimidation, retaliation, and aggressive behavior is not an appropriate response to disagreeing with a neighbor. Neighbors should be comfortable bringing concerns to each other and finding a compromise that works for all parties without fear of aggressive reaction. We should feel safe and comfortable being outside our homes on our own property. We live in a cul-de-sac with the only way out, interaction with each other, is in evidence. If Mr. Phillips continues to use intimidation, retaliation, and aggressive behavior towards his neighbors, it makes us all feel unsafe. I personally do not want to live in fear of what will be done or said when I leave the street each day to walk, to get the mail, et cetera. I want to feel comfortable going outside with my elderly family member and having friends and family with young kids visit. Please help us find a peaceful resolution to this situation so we can return to a sense of normalcy once again. Thank you for your time and consideration. And for the record, I was given permission to include this letter with the already six other letters that I gave to Kim Wohlburg regarding this situation. So I will be giving a copy of this to Kim. And the other thing for which Mr. Phillips has already been cited, borne and cited, is feeding the wildlife. Since his citation, he's only increased feeding the wildlife. We now have more crows than ever on our roofs. Our gutters are filling up with peanut shells and the rodents population is also increasing. I have recorded two nights ago, four raccoons under our porch. Our neighbors have seen seven raccoons crossing the street and four squirrels also. The crow's pecking on the roof at 7:00 in the morning because he's out there feeding. That's not acceptable. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
I'm here to speak on behalf of the End of the Trail. And I'm...
You need to have a seat, John. We'll need to address the council. It's complicated.
And now I'm here to represent myself in this second five-minute because I want to advise the city council what's going on and how I'm being threatening and harming.
You have five minutes.
But the two to finish?
No.
Okay.
I have five minutes.
Let's talk this End of the Trail real quick. And I gave Kim the package. I received a letter on the 7th from the planner and said that I have a potential violation. And he's gone through the list and Tim told me that the attorney helped draft this letter. And what's very interesting about this letter, they don't understand Oregon law. You think attorney would? I provided this to him Oregon Statute 527 that talks about what you can do on forests in terms of conservation. And, and then I went into, because it's called the Oregon Forest Practice Act. And that's a standalone division of the state of Oregon. And Creed, in his letter, is talking about my violations are from the...
zoning code.
What?
The zoning code.
But...
No, the zoning code, the people bay zoning code.
But also from the state L...
DLCD.
DLCD. And it's quoting the DLCD code that says I'm violating. Guess what? The DLC code had nothing to do with Oregon Statute 527, nor did it have anything to do with the Oregon administrative code. And because of that, and because of Mr. Creed's threatening nature toward me, he trespassed on my property without me invited. He has spoken a couple of times in kind of a raised voice. I think he's an okay guy, but I don't mind being criticized. As I mentioned before, I'm a retired telephone executive. Been up to a lot of criticism and over the years. And, but he's overstepped his authority. And I haven't given Kim yet, but I wrote before I leave, there's a statute here in Oregon that protects senior citizens over the age of 65 for elder abuse and senior citizens that have disabilities. And I have a disability. And it, he's in violation of that because of his threats. And here's the issue with the city council. The city council hasn't been involved yet. They act as the city government. Kim really hasn't been too involved acting as administrator. Creed has. And as a person and as a representative of this city, my options are, and I have talked to a land judge attorney, is to either bring suit against the city or, like what we used to do in telephone industry, we go after the person who is doing the breaking of law, and that's Creed. And I have chosen to file a suit. My attorney's going to draft one against Creed personally in violation of these laws. Unfortunately, the city's going to be brought up in this because he has done this and I have witnesses have listened to how he talked, how he trespassed, how he threatened me on my property without me inviting him and truthfully is doing wrongdoings of Oregon Forest Act. And yet, he sends me a letter saying of a potential, but under Oregon law, he has to say, what violations did I do? There's nothing here. And they are attempting to reject my lepical permit. And I made to that lepical side 25 grand under the Disability Act, abuse, under the, excuse me, the elder abuse and disability act. When you sue, you sue and you get awarded triple damages. And this will apply to the city. At this city, there's nothing about controlling Creed. Overstepping his authority and talking about issues that does not agree with state law. They're totally opposite of that. And Kim's got the palate to show that the laws are, I didn't yield it. And all I got to do left is I'm going to send him the letter back because he gave me a deadline, another threat of a deadline, or I'm going to insert from those pages I gave Kim.
Okay, thank you. You remind me this up.
I'm telling you right now, I'm not a typical person who goes along with this. I'm very well to do and I will challenge the city on your wrongdoing if you don't correct it. I will do it.
We will look into it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Okay, we'll go ahead with the, you know, unfinished business, the second meeting of the harbor ordinance. Is there a motion to read Oregon ordinance number 258-25, City People Bay Ordinance, Mandating Ordinance Number 348-23, Chapter 92 of the City People Bay Harbor Ordinance, Establishing a Harbor Use Treaty? Is there a motion to, uh, read just title only? Okay, I'll make that motion. It's going to be the second to read ordinance number 258-25 by title only. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? I will open the floor then for discussion. Okay. So there was some new items in yellow submitted. Definition and then something further down. And some of the items were kind of confusing to me. And I think of them as an editorial nature. Can you advise me that they're not? So I don't know how to bring these up to the city. Did we get a copy of these?
No, because we asked if you wanted to distribute and we never heard back from you before we had the discussion.
Oh.
So. So just to clarify, the changes that she's referring to were just clarification because a lot of the frames were regarding, we seemed to think that it was one to capture people who were purely going out for recreational. So my changes were just to merely clarify that, that this was specifically not for recreational, that it was only to be for paying passengers. The changes that Council Record is proposing, which is why I said this has to go back, is because she is proposing to allow the, you know, so we said that anybody that paid, anybody that goes out regardless of whether or not they pay, like volunteers. Volunteers, yes, something I'm thinking of right now would also have to be responsible for that fee. Council Record is proposing that that won't be the case. So that does substantially change.
I didn't address that. I'm just saying that because of the way you define what a passenger is, by definition, a passenger is somebody that pays a fee. So if you have the definition that you have here.
That actually, the change I did was actual clarification to to make sure that it was legally defensible language regarding what a passenger was. But if the council wants to tweak it, but what I read was that you are suggesting, now maybe I misunderstood. That you do not charge people, have people who go out for volunteer trips have to pay the fee. That's what I understood with whatever means.
Well, the thing is...
And that was not the intent of the council.
No, it wasn't. But the way this, I'm sorry, the argumentative, but I just want this ordinance to be clear, right? And by definition now, if anybody pays a fee, they're subject to it. But if they don't pay a fee, they're not considered a harbor passenger, passenger or user.
Right. So the original idea was that you're not going to charge, if I want to go out on a friend's boat. I'm a harbor user, but I'm not paying for it.
Right.
The clarification, because people were confused, they thought that that person would also have to pay. And I don't think that's your intent, that somebody purely going out for recreation has to pay the harbor user fee.
But by definition, it's, um, it's for a charter company with booking agencies. So that's already in the definitions.
I understand. And it's really okay to the council, we can remove the yellow, remove the clarification, then there's no need for this. My intent was simply to get some clarification for the people who had all the questions about and were concerned that we were trying to make everybody that uses that harbor pay. That was very clear to me during the work session by both Ms. Noel and by Ms. Acton, that they were saying that we were doing that. If the council wishes, we can simply remove everything that I put in and leave what you approved at the first reading. Without the clarification.
So if, so just say somebody gets a, um, a partial payment. So they're already submitting payments. So then they, so if a veteran gets half price, for example. They already have paid a fee. So they would be subject to the ordinance.
Absolutely. Yes, they're paying a fee.
Right. But if a volunteer doesn't pay a fee. Or if they wa, if a charter company waives the fee entirely, then there is no fee paid.
But that is not what the original intent of the first ordinance, I mean, council, this is what you approved. That everybody pays the fee. It was either in there that if they went out on a boat on a charter or business type or arrangement, everybody pays the fee regardless if they were volunteers or if they were deckhands or whoever.
Well, I agree with that. And I voted for that.
Right.
But then when you define it as the only thing that applies to this ordinance is is by definition, a passenger.
The simple fix is to simply leave it the way you approved it as of the first reading. I will remove the clarification.
So Council Rec, is it, is the question, the bulleted item that says individuals who are merely recreational guests or non-paying passengers aboard a private vessel? Is that the clarification question?
Well, yeah.
I mean, it, it does make it sound as if...
Contradictory.
Well, and so...
How is that contradictory? Because the charter is not a private vessel.
So a charter company could have a non-paying customer. So they're just going to give it away for free. They're going to, they're going to let the, the veteran travel on the boat for free. And so that fits into the non-paying passenger category.
No, no, it does not.
According to the definition.
All that's why all the charities are privately owned.
They're not. They're a long part of the business. They're not privately owned from the standpoint of me buying a boat and then I own owner.
But that's not what this definition says. Is it?
We'll remove it all and then we don't have this issue.
Well, I think the clarification is helpful. I think, um, I think that, um, this, the point about a non-paying passenger aboard a privately operated vessel is the, is the language that needs to be struck. And it just needs to be...
Okay, you need it as a non-paying passenger.
It just needs to be individuals who are merely recreational guests.
Okay, so if you like...
Because if you define non-paying, charter companies are in the business for people to pay.
Right.
And if somebody is non-paying, we've now exempted a person who is normally on a paying vessel. We've exempted them because they're non-paying passengers.
I'm not sure I follow that, but I will revisit that.
I'm just, I'm, I'm not opposed to keeping it the way that it is, but I understand the clarity issue.
Okay, so everybody wants to, does everybody just want to remove that, um, or non-paying passenger aboard a privately owned vessel? So the language would be individuals who are merely recreational guests. The vessel's owner or operator's employees, vessel's owner or operator's contract, such contract. Or regulatory officers, significant services, traveling thing without charge.
That would be better.
Okay, well then, that is fixed.
But there's one other place that needs to be changed.
And that would, because it's just clarifying intent, that is perfectly fine to do that now?
So the other place is in imposition of a fee. The next section down in number B where you got a yellow?
Yes, this does not include individuals who are merely recreational guests. Why would that need to be changed? That for a clarified fee?
Wait, is that harbor user fee?
To apply to all passengers embarking from Deepo Bay Harbor, whether or not...
Harbor period.
Right, that was not a change. I only added a yellow.
Um, but I think it would be clearer because we defined passengers above. So if you just ended at embarking from Deepo Bay Harbor period. That, um, just clarifying, it doesn't conflict with the definition above of what a passenger is.
I disagree, but I'm happy to do whatever it will to council.
I'm fine with that.
Fine with what?
Ending at the People Bay Harbor.
I think we will run into some issues with that. And when we do, I'll bring it back.
So, um, so can I ask just a further clarification question?
Sure.
We're on our second reading. So if we want to make changes to this, we go back to first reading again?
Not unless it's substantive. And I'm not sure whether this would fall in substantive because it was there.
What is substantive? So I'd like to, after hearing the last two, two meetings, I'd like to open up for discussion the actual fee that we're charging. Is that considered substantive? Because we're going to control the fees via resolution anyway?
Correct. And you know, that, I heard rumors of that happening. So I was kind of thinking about what that would be and checking into that. And, um, that, it's a, it's an amount. We're going to control by resolution. So the research I found did not indicate that as substantive. But changing something from suddenly saying that we're going to charge everybody to suddenly saying that we're going to not charge everybody. That's a pretty substantive change. But just changing the dollar amount, they don't consider that as substantive change.
So do we want to entertain a motion then to...
I would like to open up, um, also, uh, under 921 imposition of fee. I would like to reduce from the $2 to the $1 per person, per trip. For the council too?
Yeah, I, to, to that end, I would like to maybe refine it even further. And that would be that, um, children under 12 would be a dollar and everybody over 12 would be $2?
Now you're making a substantive change.
Okay. And the, and the reason for that, and if you, if we listen to the, the harbor folks talk about it. And the challenge for most of them is that the vast majority of the passengers are coming from whale watch. And whale watches impact families typically. And so, um, the, the makeup of a family is usually two adults and whatever, whatever the children are. And so there was some thought about if we charge somebody $20 for a whale watch. That's 10%, a 10% fee to do a whale watch trip. 10% is a pretty substantial amount. When you take that same number, you charge $2 for somebody that's going out on a fishing trip. That $2 is a, is a minimal 2% or 1%, whatever that number is. And so it, it impacts, the, the, the user fee is impacting the users that are on the shortest trips, that are causing the most passengers in the greatest amount versus the, the long-term fishermen that are only getting charged the $2 as well. And so, um, I heard what they said and I, I'm open to the idea of reducing the fee for the, the children. And having the $2 fee for other passengers besides the children. And since that's substantive, my suggestion would be that we deal with it the way that it is today. And we come back via resolution and we change the pricing structure. Is that okay?
Are you done?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I, yeah, I too would like to get this ordinance enacted. Um, the problem I see, I didn't know I understood your argument, is then the operators and charter boat companies and skippers will have to keep track on their manifest of who is over, how many people are over 12 and under 12. And I don't see that happening. And it's a potential big loophole. Because I don't think the manifest shows the ages of people. And so if we can just enact the ordinance as it is and then look at what we want to collect information on, and if we can actually be able to audit that down the road. That is, because that's, that's going to be the challenge. Because it's potential loophole. That's what we've thought there.
So just to, to counter to that, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, I did have a conversation with a couple of the captains. And what they're told from their booking agents is I have 15 adults, three children and two boat charters. That's what the captains are getting as far as, as the summary of who's getting onto their boat. That would be the same summary that we're going to ask them to provide to us for billing purposes. Is what was, who, who did you get on your boat? I had 15 adults, three children and, um, one boat charter, wherever that happens to be. So they're already doing that today. And originally, the thought behind the $2 fee was it's going to be simple. You know, it's the, they're all going to be able to do it because it's just one fee across the board. It's just the total number of down times $2. And in talking with them, they've said, we, we already know who's getting onto our boat. They tell us that, the booking agents tell us that when, when I'm assuming when the trip leaves or when they, when they go out. So, um, again, it's, we, we need to enact the ordinance, I believe. I don't believe we have any other, the, the alternatives, I think we, we should still continue to look at them, but I think we need to enact the ordinance. It's just the structure of these, I think that I have a little challenge with.
And I do too. I really believe we should reduce it on the advice of the captain we heard last week. Advising us to do $1. And possibly children under 12 free.
But that means we have, we wouldn't support enact this ordinance. We have to come back. So since the harbor fee can be done by resolution, we can do that later.
If you do it now, yes, we'll have to come back and start. Just start first over with the first reading. Just pushes that we wouldn't be able to implement this. There's any, we're getting also close to to be able to implement it beginning to on January 1st anyway.
And since whale watching is over, we have some time to, to, to do this.
I think there's simplicity. It should be a dollar a person. And that way we don't have to verify ages. It makes it easier. I listened to our last council meeting. Some people that in the business say they have to talk families into taking these whale watch practices. And we don't want to curtail their business.
It's too difficult to raise our deficit. We don't, that will not raise enough money for the harbor at all. So can we enact it with the $2 we already have in the ordinance? And then, um, bring it up again and talk about this by resolution?
Yeah, if all we're not in agreement on is, is the fee, then I think that's all. Next, Joe.
I think, uh, we can work with the harbor group. The dollar's the starting point. Uh, children under a certain age, they ride free because that's part of families. We've listened to a lot of testimony or information from all the groups. We understand this will be a burden to a lot of the financially. We are going to work with the harbor group to make us all stronger. And this is the starting point. If we need to revisit it, you know, we'll revisit it. But I think working together, we can at least have this as a starter. We seem to think the dollar was, was within the realm.
And the ordinance right now is $2.
Understand.
So if we can just enact the ordinance and then come back at another meeting and look at the fee structure. And see what we can actually get from the vessels if we audit them. We've been told a lot of stuff. And not all of it is true. So what I'm thinking is if we aren't able to audit the records, like if we have concerns or questions.
Okay, how, how do we audit their records?
I want to know what's being collected and how we, if we have questions, how we, what it will look like when we get those records.
Well, we can talk about that at another time.
That's right. That's what I'm thinking.
Right. I think at this point in time, we need to move along and come closer to this.
Yeah.
And so we listened to a lot of folks. We need to make a decision. So that's where I stand.
So if we go amend this to $1 per person, we would have to go back to first reading again?
No, if you meant it to $1 and go free for children and otherwise, yes. Because there's a lot of language in there that indicates that that would matter.
Okay.
But if we were to just go to $1?
For everybody.
And then handle a, a change to this after maybe the first filing, if we need to. So the first filing is going to be April 30th. And so by April 30th, we would have some preliminary numbers. We'd be able to see what the recording is looking like.
Would be into the budget?
We would be at the budget. So we could, we could at that point decide via resolution if we wanted to raise it.
Well, excuse me, I know we could change our minds, but we already passed. We, we actually had this conversation before and we all, you know, majority agreed to go with $2.
We did, but we didn't have the testimony from the captains and the...
They, they provided us a lot more information that was really direct. And it really would affect their business, the narrow lifeblood of our community. So we need to work with them.
It's important to me that we pass it. And if, you know, doing, doing it at a dollar, I'm good with that. It gives us some doc, it's a documentation of where we're going to be at. Plus, we're going to know how much of the deficit of harbor is looking at.
My apologies, uh, changing from $2 to $1 is substantive.
Okay.
So we'd have to go back.
All right. So then, if we approve this tonight. Um, we would be having to approve it at $2 worth of language changes that we're getting.
You would adopt it in December at the, at the $2.
If we don't, and we want to go, we want to make changes and modifications to it. We would come back to another first reading in January because we're going to... But we won't get it, we won't get it done by December.
If this is all we're changing, I can do that. If we start changing a lot more other things, then we need to...
Okay, so then the ultimate question would be, can we do a first reading, a second reading? And adoption of all of the same thing?
Yes, we can.
I...
As long as it stays the entire council agrees.
So I, I'm sorry, I, I would like to say that we've been working on this a lot of times. I know you're all thinking the dollar, but you know, they charge a hundred and $10 minimum for a fishing trip.
And not for a whale watching trip. And that's what their majority of their business is.
Not by, not by revenue. That's not true.
And, um, I guess I was misunderstood in understanding.
What's that?
I guess I misunderstood them.
By revenue, probably you're, you're correct. By revenue, the fishing trips make them the biggest amount of money. But by passengers, this is a passenger fee.
Right.
Then whale watchers are by far the biggest number.
Whale watchers are the greatest number. Keep in mind, they're working with us. You know, we're going to work together and amend this the way we can to be solved. They made that commitment to us, so we're going to work through this.
This will not raise enough money to even, you know, cut off half of the costs that we subsidize the harbor with. And certainly by October, we won't know that anyway because that's not their high season. So, um...
I think we should give it a year at a dollar.
Me too.
And then go from there. So they have to.
Because it's new.
Everybody pays a dollar, no, no token fee or nothing, right?
Well, we have to keep it that way if we're going to
Right.
put a split dollar if we're going to subsidize anything.
Yeah, so the way this could work in December is with making this change that it's just a dollar. That as long as the majority of the coun, council wishes to suspend the usual rules, you guys can do that. So you can move it first, first, second and third reading, or first, second and adoption. It doesn't have to be unanimous, it just needs to be the majority of the council saying, we want to suspend the usual rule and do a full adoption right now. But it's, I'm not going to be able to get everything in place by January. I will try, I forget for these reforms for them to fill out at least. Because one of the things we're going to have to have them do is register, so we have their information just like a short-term rental does.
But that can be part of licensing. Well, because we have to redo all of our licenses in January anyways, so as part of the licensing process, you could collect that information for.
Maybe it, I don't know if it's going to be part of the business licensing, um, or just a separate like we do with short-term rental.
I I, my thought is I would like to, I would like to adjust the fee. And so if that means we have to go to a another first, second reading, then we do that at the next meeting and we try to adapt from there. Um, that's my, that's my thought.
There are the counselors.
I think so, because I think if if we adopt it at two for second reading, it's going to, people aren't going to understand that that's not the final price. And it's going to ruffle a lot of feathers again. I just, I I think we should try it out at the low rate and see what happens.
I think it's, it's a start. It's um, it's going to be difficult for a lot of folks. We don't want to take their livelihood away from them or hinder their ability to fund. Understandably, to Fran's point, um, they are operating in a deficit, we all agree to that. Um, we are working that direction with them as well, with the caveat, say, let's make it stronger. And start with a dollar and we can grow from there. And if not, then revisit it. That's, that's given some this, give it a.
So um so that section A now says the harbor user can amount of two dollars per passenger per trip is hereby imposed. On each passenger embarked from EcoBay Harbor, the fee applies to all passengers regardless of age, paid fare or whether a fare is charged.
Correct. It would be a dollar.
Right.
Per passenger per trip.
But I, again, I go back to the definition of passengers, those that pay a fare.
We're removing all of that stuff that I put in there and leaving it the way you approved it before.
But the last phrase of that, well, whether.
I understand that the council concurred with removing it. Again, I still think that will muddy the waters, but if the council wishes to remove that, I will be happy to remove it.
Also, this is my feeling. Were there other thoughts on that? It's under ninety-two point thirty-one B.
The B was to remove it, but I'm talking about the phrase at the end of A, which goes to that section.
The fee applies to all passengers regardless of who, well.
Age or paid fare.
I think that needs to be stayed in there to be clarified. Um, there are going to be questions about whether a volunteer or a senior, I I really for enforcement would appreciate that stayed in there.
I agree. Yeah, if someone's being comped a a tour, they can pay a dollar. Okay. So just as an example, all the people that go out on the fleet of flowers that go out for free, they're all going to each pay a dollar.
No, they're not paying passengers.
But that for weather.
Their, this fleet of flowers is not taking people out as paying passengers. You guys, pardon me, but if you want to start charging the fleet of flowers for a dollar, you know.
No, we're trying to, we're trying to.
I I get it, I guess you, but yeah, no, it's paying passengers. It means that if the fleet of flowers normally charged people to go out, they would be considered a paying passenger. They're charged for it. But in this case, there's, there's going to be no way of completely defining passenger that we're not going to run into yet. Because we're just going to have to do it on a case by, okay, do you use the fleet of flowers only to our people go out? The answer is no, so we wouldn't charge.
Why would that?
The only question that you're going to run into are the guided ones. Because you can't really monitor them because they have guide votes that come in. Usually it's minimum of four. That would be a question that I would have right off the bat. Uh, with the understanding of either we monitor that or have that.
I do not have any answer for you on that.
That's where.
I'm really not sure I were going to monitor that.
I've listened and talked to lots of folks about that and that seems to be something we got to work out.
So if I may, we provided a a section for exemptions.
Correct.
Why would the fleet of flowers not be an exemption to the paid passenger rule? Because it is an organized event that is happening, they can apply for an exemption just like any other, whatever we've told them they needed to to do to get an exemption.
Okay, so you're thinking they should go and submit under the exemption clause?
And then, then you don't have an issue with
Okay. I love it.
with the paid passengers.
Love it.
Then everybody pays, volunteers pay. Um, you know, if they're getting it, if it's a veteran, they're getting a free free trip or whatever reason, they still need to pay them.
Yeah, that's a good point there.
And then if they need an exemption, then they go over the exemption clause.
Okay. Which will end up going to the council on this one, so. I don't know that, it, I don't know if you would be comfortable with the city administrator approving that or if you'd want to see it. If the council, like when somebody requests an exemption from the um payment of the of the the community hall. You know, I'm assuming you'd want to see it in the same context.
That's not an assumption I care about.
In fact, I would, if the fleet of flowers, if you're saying that the fleet of flowers will be responsible for paying, then I do think that you need to hear them and see the exemption. Because I would probably say that. No, I'm just saying if that's the case, because they'll have to come forth and I'd rather have you guys hear it.
We're not, we're not suggesting that.
Right, so.
But.
Why don't we just say the fleet of flowers passengers are exempt as long as they don't pay a fee? Right into our ordinance for check, for changing it anyway.
Well, I think um, council itself is just subjecting, they fill out like an exception and they come in and have it then.
They have to, they have to do it for the community hall anyway, so something.
That is true. They'll do it all at the same time.
Could just do it at the same time.
Yes, that's good idea.
And and then by having the exemption clause in there, it does give, you know, maybe you've got a a family group that's coming out and they're wanting to do a a at-seat funeral. And they've got a charter company that's going to do it for no charge for them.
Hmm.
So in that case, they could file for the exemption. The city administrator could decide whether that was going to be allowed or not. And then, you know, it it's done. We don't, I don't know that we need to have a call out of individual individual uh associations and events and all of that kind of stuff. The exemption category should covers that for us.
To the point of empty accounts from the cell. Um, another question is, is just to clarify, so we've offered that five percent rebate. Do we still want to do that?
Absolutely. They're going to need to pay credit card fees. Yeah, so.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will put this on the December ninth, uh, the change, changes made.
So one, once more, I want to try to explain why I think this ordinance is flawed, we don't change the language. Could you please look at the definition of harbor passengers?
But page?
On the.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, page twenty-five.
I thought we were picking that out.
We're, we're taking out the, how does that first bullet now read?
Individual, individuals who are merely recreational guests.
Right. So, okay, so that's the non-paying passenger part, right? Does, has taken, taken out.
Yeah, I took out everything after recreational guests.
All right.
Gone.
Right, so by definition, a harbor passenger means any person who has paid any amount or from whom an amount has been paid by another person. Right? So if, if somebody doesn't pay, look at ninety, look at the A in ninety-two point three-one imposition of a fee. This fee applies to all passengers regardless of age or paid fare or whether a fare is charged. If they don't, by definition, if they don't pay anything, they aren't a passenger. So I think if you want to make it clear, you just say the B applies to all passengers regardless of age or paid fare, the amount of paid fare. But if you say, well, whether a fare is charged, that's, then the definition of passenger doesn't work. So I just, I I just have a hard time when I, on reading words that are contradictory. If a fare is charged, they're a passenger. If a fare is not charged, they are not considered a passenger. So that means if they're volunteering aren't charged, or better, and aren't charged, well, they're not, they're not considered a passenger.
If I might clarify?
Yes, okay.
Um, the um, it's not contradictory.
Why?
At least according to what I'm buying, the definition establishes who could be a passenger. It's based broadened purpose. It captures everyone who might fall under the fee unless exempted. Passenger means any person transported for compensation. That's your baseline bucket. The exemption has narrowed the bucket. Once you define the broad group, you carve out any kind of exceptions. And in this case, we're clearly defining what absolutely would be considered as not getting kind of considerations. And again, the councilor's will, the councilor can choose to change it. The reason it's in there is it because it will help reinforce because these were the bucket, the categories that people are most concerned about.
So Councilor Rick, you're wanting to put a period after the word age? In A, ninety-niney-two thirty-one A. So put a period after age.
Or paid fare, because the amount of fare might change. It might be thirty, but they might change it to half. So it doesn't matter how much they pay. It's, it's almost like A. So I would put a period after fare.
The fee applies to all passengers.
Regardless of age or paid fare. Because by definition.
Passengers have to be paid. So you don't even need paid fare, because by definition, passengers are to be paid.
Mm-hmm, that's true. The fee applies to all passengers. But by definition, people who don't pay any fare are not passengers. And I know what you said him right then, but.
That that's fine. If the council wishes to have it removed, if it becomes a contention, I will bring it back with clarification, clarification and change.
I don't want to revisit this again though, so I'd rather do it right for first time. We've, we've wordsmithed this thing to death.
Yes.
So um, the only, the thing that would take care of this would be changing the definition of passenger to include those that normally pay a fare but that are comped. Um, that would, that would, that are comped passenger. Because then, any volunteer, anybody who's gotten, you know, waived fee, still would have to pay. But right now, it doesn't say anything like that. So means any person who has paid any amount or who has been paid for a ticket, contract or other fee, entitled that person to transport a vessel that's part of the commercial charter, data trip or other fare-based operation. This includes people who normally would pay but have been comped.
That was removed out of ninety-two point thirty-one imposition on C B. We took that away. Where I clearly set out that complimentary promotional volunteer and other paid passengers are not exempted.
Yeah, so I think what Councilor Rick is saying is define that in who is a passenger. So uh, bullet number one, under who is a passenger, would be that anybody who's, who has, who would normally pay but has been comped, is still considered a passenger.
Yep. If you change, if you add that to the definition, then there's no contradictions of the ordinance.
And then we could keep, because there was concern about vessel owners and operators and their employees, we don't want to have to charge them. The vessel owners or operators, contractors, subcontractors, you know, people that are out on the boat, fix it or whatever.
I'm not, I guess I'm not following what you want harbor passenger, passenger, or anything you should just say.
So the bullet, the first bullet would be modified to say normal individual or individuals who would normally pay a fare who are not paying because of whatever reason.
Well, no, no, that that's not.
That won't work.
That won't work. I think you just need, I'm sorry to harp on this, you just need to add another phrase before the the term does not include. Right in there, you could say, people who normally pay a fare, um, but are comped are also considered passengers.
Well, let me ask you this. So part of um, Carrie has volunteers. And she uses quite a few of them.
Right.
And one of their perks, if you will, is a whale trip. She doesn't pay us.
No, but she does still pay.
But she gives us a comp of a whale trip.
But you still pay the dollar.
Is that.
So you paid it all.
Right, so but you're, by your definition, if it's somebody who normally pays, her argument will be, these people don't normally pay, they work for me. That's your, that's my fee. That's what she pays me for.
Well, just add, just add something that makes sense. Um, volunteers, um, comp, volunteers, comma, comped tickets um, are also um, considered passengers. So you just want to include people like that. And then it's simple.
Whatever the council wishes.
I think we should descend through the language, I mean, we're trying to build the language now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think, you know, I could, I could probably wordsmith this again and send you some language that you can send out to everybody. Or you could, Fran could do it as well. Um, just to clarify the bullet number one and then leave everything else exactly the same. You could leave, you could leave ninety-two dot thirty-one the same. Um, or put a period after.
It's not the first bullet. It's, it's part of the definitions for that.
Yeah.
Okay, I could send you something.
Okay.
All right.
And then the council is going to do first, second and adoption at the next council meeting.
Correct.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay. All righty, we'll move on to the uh nuisance lighting ordinance, Dr. View. Does anyone have a chance to remove this? Open up the floor for a discussion, please.
Yeah, so I reviewed this um before the massive quantity of changes that came through. So all the, the memo that I sent with my adjustments were um really irrelevant because of the 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 language had changed dramatically from the first packet, so um, I think we should ignore all the comments that I had made. And really kind of focus on what being exempt here is, and this is, this looks to me like the language ordinance is getting more, we're talking about point two uh ruins or something, and so it's, I haven't, I haven't actually, I don't, I don't know what that means.
I have to have. I have to have a way to say that light is trespassing. Because it can't be a simple matter of, they got a bright light, there's a street across from me and yet I can see it. So what has been proposed, and the plan commission is going through the same thing, is having a light leader. Where we say, this is the ruins and this has been vetted by our electrical expert, Eric Sherman, who does electrical for everywhere. And this is, he said, this is a good approach to be able to keep light from trespassing, because it's a concern of theirs as well. I have to have something that I can manage, because right now, as I drove through town last night, I was amazed at the number of bright lights. And right now, if you don't put some kind of measurement on it, I have no way of enforcing anything.
Okay, so to that point, is the council and staff ready to take, for every one of those lights that you just described, you're going to get a complaint? And are you ready to address all of those complaints uh for that nuisance lighting?
I'm not sure what you thought a nuisance lighting ordinance would do. You are asking us to address all complaints about lighting. And that means everybody in the city will get to complain about their neighbor's lights.
Well, so, but um nuisance, um, first of all, there has to be a complaint, as you've defined.
Well, we are no longer only complaint driven, so technically it doesn't.
Well, it says it in this ordinance.
Well, it says it, we got a complaint, sure, but I can file a complaint.
But um, so my wording comments were handed out. And um, there's two things that are most important. Um, in number three, we say searchlights, laser sources, strobe or flashing lights, or any similar high intensity lights are not permitted. And then we go in number six.
Well, that was a duplicate, Councilor Musso will pick that up, we're just gonna fix that, that shouldn't be like that.
So we, we're gonna strike in number six?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't realize that it was pointed out that it was in there twice. Two different things, but in the course.
Um, so.
Oh, by the way, can I confirm something though? One of the reasons why we laser lights is because we have one prominent laser light show every holiday. Now, if you're not doing it this year.
I don't do lasers.
You, you do have a searchlight.
But I don't do lasers.
Right, so we need to make sure that, we talked about this in-house today. And I thought that if something like this came up, like this, say, Councilor Musso wouldn't want to do it again, we could always do like a special event exemption if you want, for just the holiday season. So I wanted to bring that up to you, and just make sure we're all in sync with that.
So the other important.
Because I'm eager not to ever do that again.
So the other important, I mean, actually, I think all my comments are important, of course, but the really important thing is that it's nuisance light impacting res- residential properties. It's not nuisance light, um, on residential properties. Because the lighting.
That's fine, okay. It, but it's still, to me, means I still need a measurement, because somebody's impact is different than somebody else's.
So, but, yeah.
So, I agree with, I agree with that, that sounds great.
And, um, that read up above is just from the glare, this is where you had it, wasn't, this doesn't need to give a definition. But, um, so the purpose of the section is to provide a basic recommendation that will make any lighting appropriate to the need. So what you want is, and keep light from shining off-site and onto adjacent residential properties. First of all, it don't have to be adjacent, but just, you know, residential properties. But, um, but.
Well, pardon me, it doesn't need to be adjacent residential properties, otherwise I'm gonna have to deal with complaints from people who really don't have any trespass, but they just don't like the fact that their neighbor's light is bright.
Well, but the point is, any, any light that shines off somebody's property, onto somebody's other property, whether they're adjacent, which means right next door, it could be across the street, that's not.
But what does shine mean?
But you can measure it at the property boundaries, at, at five feet above the ground, or whatever your standard is.
Right, exactly, with the light meter at the two, which there's no way it's gonna go on another person's property, it will be adjacent properties. So, we can remove it, I'm happy to do that, not a problem.
Just the word adjacent.
Yep, happy to do it.
And so the idea of, um, light having to be shining on somebody's habital structure, to me, it just be, should be shining on somebody else's property, as measured at the property boundaries. Why would it have to be, I mean, because that is just as disruptive if your front yard is illuminated as it is at your bedroom or or your, uh, living room.
Well, I believe, I believe the intent is that if somebody's light, if my light, not that Brady or anywhere near each other, but Brady and I are next door, and my light crossed my boundary, my property boundary, and trespass onto his property boundary.
That's four.
That, where I would need to measure it.
Yeah.
To verify, that is what this intent is, it's not.
It does, it says habital structure. He says at the, you're measuring it at a habital structure.
Which one do you add?
You're not measuring it at the property, but somebody's property.
I'll clarify to say property line, boundary line, property line.
Okay, thank you.
To say property line.
Where, where was that, uh, council?
Everywhere is, it says on number five. I've changed it, it's on the boundaries of residential properties, and on seven, instead of, um, near, in the nearest habital area. So just changing that to at the boundaries of another residential property. And it's the same with, um, the last one. When such light is directed towards or detectable beyond the boundary of another's property. So, and you can measure it the same way, you know, and with that, we have it at four feet above the ground, where is that?
Yeah, that same.
That is, and, um, I saw, just here tonight. I think it's in the definitions.
Um, I found three places where it says available, so I fixed all three of those.
But I want to see where the.
Oh, it's number five.
Yeah, so say it's a number five.
Point two horizontal footprints.
Okay, good, all right, that's fine, that's all right.
Uh, we do need to clear, uh, fix ninety four point forty three. It's got a couple of links in there that should.
I, yeah, I responded back that I'll fix it during final editing of the format.
And then I would like to add, um, and I, I know, uh, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I think we need to add emergency declaration in here, just to.
That's great.
Um, I think we need to give, you know, something to the effect, and I just kind of wrote it off, we said in the ten day correction period, and strobing, flashing, laser lights, or other lighting violations present an immediate threat to public health or safety, constitute deliberate harassment, or create conditions likely to cause seizures or other medical emergencies. The city administrator and/or their designee may order immediate cessation of the offending lighting pending formal proceedings. Uh, failure to comply with an immediate cessation order shall constitute a separate violation, subject to citation and fine for each day of monitoring.
I did some research, the only thing you won't be able to do is deliberate harassment. We are not the courts, and our job is not to deal with harassment, stalking issues.
Sure, makes sense.
So, that is great, I thought that was an excellent idea, and I will definitely make that change, as long as the council goes first. Yeah, I thought that was a good one, I wasn't sure we could do it, but I found that we could, and how the structure would work. So I got some language to pop in there, that expands on what you did, Counselor. Just to expand, yours is fine.
Yeah.
Um, can I, are we recording on this, please, please?
No, this is way not ready.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. In fact, it's not even on there as a, neither the tree nor the lighting are on there for actions. Because we have to do public hearing, and these are significant, both of these are big enough rest of public needs to know, and I need to really get it out there.
So the nuisance lighting, we don't, we cannot go until?
No.
When, can we do it December ninth?
I've put it on December ninth, and we'll make sure that the public has plenty of opportunity to come and comment.
Okay, can we do it as first, second reading?
You, uh, you say, of course, as long as everybody agrees.
Okay.
Or, excuse me, majority agrees, majority agrees.
Any other, um, discussion on that? We're gonna take a five minute break.
On mine, five minute break, we'll go forward for that five minutes, thank you.
Excuse me for interrupting, but there's no audio for me. I'm just wondering if um. Oh, thank you so much.
Sorry.
Wanting to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to accept the uh contract as presented for the 101 bridge bracket. Uh is there discussion on motion?
I um have a question. Did it go though who did?
Oh yeah, um our city engineering handles that process and we did the RFP and everything. It's like we did for the next one.
This is the same guy that's doing the work for the state though, right?
Yes, yes, but we still went through a process.
Okay.
And both bids, both of these on here came under budget. We needed that. In fact, the second one they got a really good deal, so. It's awesome.
Good, of course only good for 30 days. Are we gonna get this work done in 30 days?
The bridge bracket? From what do you mean 30 days?
What good for 30 days?
Oh, don't worry about that. Don't worry about that.
Do brackets getting replaced depend on this the water main?
Yes, yes.
Is the water main gonna be finished in time to get the brackets done?
Oh, it it everything will be coordinated like a ballet.
Mm-hmm.
So everything will be coordinated.
A wet ballet.
We're hoping to. The water main does we can turn.
A cold and wet ballet.
Bridge off. Once we turn the bridge off, it will brackets.
And the next one is also also part of this undertaking, not just the starting bridge, but to isolate, to be able to isolate the bridge and something along that.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? Okay, we've got a recommendation for the Shell Avenue Water Main project. Uh an amount of 162, 715,000 dollar or yes, whatever. Uh is there motion to accept this bid as presented?
So this is. Wanting to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
They moved in second to accept this uh contract as well.
So this was the contract for 147, 923, is that what this is?
Plus a 10% contingency?
Yeah.
162, 715 was the total. And the wooden bidder would be?
Pacific.
Pacific excavation.
Yes. I just want to get that on my.
That's a good company.
Yeah, Pacific. Yeah, that's great. I'm sorry, thank you for putting that on there.
Yeah, so the only concern I had on this was the timeline manager. Because this has to be done before the bridge stuff can be done. Yes. And so this is like almost an immediate type of.
That's why. That's why we just fast track on this. Yes, we did fast track.
And how can we? Did we get a grant for this?
Not for this, but it was budgeted. Everything was budgeted.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Okay. Uh we have the study methodology presented by um the uh alignment partners and I am thrilled that they are taking this on course. I think this is gonna be a huge benefit for our city to see if we could work with other, with the entities from Gleneadon service district. And so I would like to go forward with this uh proposal. It is courageous and it will show our constituents that we are researching every viable option uh to process um our neighbors.
Um.
Excuse me. Yes.
Are we open for comment?
Yes.
Yeah, I um I'm just not, I mean this is, they're calling this a viability study, but they're not considering any of the other options. So it's really not a viability study at all. If they're not gonna look at termination as an option or redoing the contract, it's really more of a feasibility study. And just because a solution is viable doesn't mean that it is the right thing or it's that it's in our best interest. And so um I just have a bit of a gnawing question about who's paying for it and what is the agenda that's behind it? Because the, it seems as if the um the consensus bureau that is the one that's pushing this obviously has the agenda that they want us to do this, this uh
Jump.
This, this. Yeah, the sanitary district. And so it just, I'm a little bit concerned that there's an agenda here that we're not aware of. And why are they coming to us for methodology when they should be going to whoever's paying for this and trying to figure out what it is that they want to have done? Because we've already made our decision. We said no, we're terminating this. And so I, I just have a, there seems to me to be some underlying agenda here that we're not aware of.
So when they came and presented, they council agreed to allow them to do this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the idea for them to do this, and they did call the viability study, the idea is definitely to see if the council had an interest in seeing whether or not a sanitary sanitary authority would be an option. They never said they were going to evaluate all options for us. They only said that they're purview or they're understated and they're because they're getting money from the governor's office, from the regional authority solutions folks. That's where the money is coming from to do this. Those folks are these folks because they have experience doing it. If you ask who has an agenda of having a sanitary district, I will tell you who has the agenda. Sanitary, these folks, yes. DEQ and other state organizations. They like sanitary districts because it puts all of it under one group to average it. They don't like this piecemeal that we're doing right now, that we're a part of. So they do have an interest, but this study is just to simply see if this is an avenue for the city to explore. The council will ultimately decide whether or not you want to move forward. You're just gonna have the information on what it might look like.
Yeah, but we only have part of the information and that's the concern. If, if they're only doing the study to say, here's what the sanitary district is about, we haven't seen any kind of information that would say, you know what? If we terminate this and we were to do this all on our own, this is gonna be better for the ratepayers in Deepo Bay because we have the infrastructure already here. We don't need to invest millions of dollars on new infrastructure, blah, 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 blah. And so by not analyzing the other alternatives, we're not getting the complete picture. What we're getting is a set of information that they can go public with and say, you know what? This is viable and it's the best solution for Gleneadon.
I can address that as well. What you're gonna get for the idea of whether or not Gleneadon should just simply extend the contract, which we're not in favor of, or they become a customer and what does it look like to the ratepayers in Deepo Bay if we do not work with Gleneadon? That is coming from the rate study that I've already seen it. We're gonna be, so they're not addressing that piece. But the rate study is that we authorize to do the rate SDCs. That, we're gonna get some nice piece of their action on SDCs. That, that piece. This was never what these folks came to us to say they were gonna do.
Well, I'm fine with, personally, I'm fine with saying, you know what? Let's go ahead and let them do the study. But I would not be willing to jump in and say at this point that this study should ever be an underlying document that just defines how we as a city are gonna handle our own outcome. You know, we, we need to be able to determine our own future. We don't need an, an external party. If we, if they wanna provide us the information for consideration, if consent organ, if consensus wants to pay for it.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Um and I don't know why they're asking us for what we specifically need because.
Well, I don't know either, but I said I'd send it to you.
Because, I mean seriously, I, I think at this point, their outcomes from this survey need to be quite magnanimous for us to be able to consider going back to what we had before.
So did you guys get my comments? I know.
I got it. I did, yeah.
You did? Yeah.
But last.
Yeah. So I think um there are. I fully agree and not only is this, you know, this, you know, they're, they're only looking at one option, the sanitary authority. And but there's two places that they are definitely putting their thumb again on the scale that by those findings will push us to that.
I don't believe that's true. I don't believe that's true Fran. Um well. I think we need to do it.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying we don't do the study, but I want changes to the criteria because I think the criteria are weighted against us.
I agree.
And the first one is effective, right? Um so it says um the, the criteria presumes that an effective system is a combined system. That's the definition of effective. Because it says, does the option have the collection capacity and the next one of the infrastructure capacity to receive all wastewater flow from both communities? Right? And um.
What's wrong with that?
Yeah, there is an assumption and that's why they prefer sanitary districts, that it is more effective for sanitary district to do this. So they're not wrong in their statement.
But they've led, they've led with the assumption that a sanitary district is the best solution.
Oh, it doesn't, we know that when they came to that meeting, they certainly were.
So I'm still saying, is that the criteria we want to keep in? And it doesn't at all consider, yeah, it has a capacity, but it doesn't have the capacity unless we, you know, inconvenience Bay Street people, anybody who's in Bay Street, until we go down 60 feet and dig out the sewer pipe and it's, you know, put in a 60 foot, 60 whatever wide, 60 foot down, put in a larger. So it doesn't even ask that question.
That's not their scope. That's not their scope. Their scope is to determine simply whether we would benefit or this dish, we would all benefit from a sanitary district. That's, that's their scope.
But you're not asking the right question. You're not saying, would we benefit from a sanitary district because it can be more efficient because it's handled both holes? But doesn't ask at all about how inconvenienced Deepo Bay is to be able to handle that. And then timely criteria, they're using, we already terminated the agreement, they have five years. And their question is that um whether that um contractual milestone, the agreement termination, can they get a new facility in five years? Well, we know they can't do that. So again, they're saying, you won't meet that criteria. Therefore um we have to have a joint system because they can't meet the five years. We already said we're not gonna terminate the agreement. We can't terminate the agreement. We terminated, but DEQ won't stop us, will not allow us to terminate services, even if we terminate the agreement, until they have a wastewater treatment in place. So again, by having the criteria be five years, that, that just presumes that, oh, they can't have a new wastewater system plant in five years. Therefore um they have to go with this joint authority.
There is nowhere in there, you know, says you have to go with anything. They are, in fact, during their workshop with us, they specifically said they're really going to make a recommendation. You and the council will get to decide what you wanna do.
But they're gonna present a report and then we're gonna have to fight against the public, say, oh my God, we're gonna have to pay more without the full considerations.
We don't have to pay more.
Why are we gonna say five years? It's not even feasible that they can get the permitting in place in five years. So why are we being held to a criteria for five years when we could put it out to 10 years and that might have a viable alternative then? And um the, and my other concern was on um redundant system. What if we have a earthquake? Is it better to have a one sewage treatment plant? Or is it better to have two? Because that part of the coast might react differently to this part. We're on salt, they're on sand. Um and then of course this protect coastal resources. I don't know if you saw those articles, but the amount of sewage that we put out is gonna, is doubled, is Gleneadon already is in our system, it's more than double. And then Gleneadon Beach is growing. And so, and so are we. So more and more sewage, more and more microplastics, more and more pharmaceuticals, more and more durable chemicals into our water right by the cap beds and in our whales and our fish. They, you know, the criteria is is inadequate to deal with that. And they keep on saying, oh, applicable standards. Well, wastewater applicable standards are so far lagging behind for what we know the damage is being done by microplastics and PFAS that again, they are putting the, their, their finger on the scales. It's not a, it's not a legitimate study.
That's what we have. And I don't think we should take it on trying to piecemeal and trying to correct all of it. I think we should go with it and.
Well, I've suggested some wording for um just some criteria be changed. I think we should eliminate the first one, but if we don't. Um the timely criteria, put that out to a 10-year horizon.
But it doesn't have five years in here, does it?
But that's our, that's what our, we, our agreement itself says five years.
But it's not in there.
So that's contractual milestone of agreement termination. That means our five years.
So if we do a new contract, it's a different date.
No, it, they're saying, will they have a sewer treatment plant?
This to death, Fran, and I, I'm.
I looked at this though and we need to move forward with it. It's something that we, we, we need to help with. I'm not saying not to Kathy, but we are being change the timeframe to 10 years and I'm set up about that one. And let's.
Considering very many here, it says 10 years. Five years.
It says five. We are, our contractual agreement is five years. Let's change it to 10 to make it um more feasible. And then um the redundancy question, that's one. I put the questions I want added in um in italics. And so there's not that many bullets to add. Last one I have more changes to, but.
What's the will of the council?
I mean, I agree with Fran's sentiment. It is important stuff, but it also depends on how seriously we take the outcome of this study, you know? So we can just let them do it and and remember that at the end of the day, we have a lot more um points to it that aren't included. Like things that Fran brought up, things that we do need to consider, things that we already know are important to us. These people aren't gonna take it in consideration necessarily, so.
But this is kind of change the criteria to make it more. And it's, there was only, there's only a number of things to add.
Yeah, change it to 10 years, I think that's fine.
I don't see anything. I see something in here that says, can the option be implemented and operational before the benchmark date of agreement termination?
We already terminated it.
But the benchmark date is five years.
2027.
Yes, so it's saying, can the option, it's not saying, can you? It's just simply saying, can an option be implemented by 2027?
So if.
The only option that can be is a combined system.
Is the combined system, that's, that's.
That's not what it's saying. It's just saying, can, to determine if an option meets this criteria, we will consider the following questions. Can the option be implemented and operational before the benchmark date of agreement termination? Such that significant interruption, that's not leaning toward one side or the other.
It's true, because the only option that could conceivably work is a sewer district.
You are not wrong when you say that they are completely spewed to this, but this is not.
That criteria.
If you look at the first, what is a viability study? It says, the WP's role is not to persuade the communities to choose a sanitary authority or wending one option over another. Rather, our goal is to develop and share information and make next, may support decision making. How wastewater is managed to go Deepo Bay and Gleneadon is up to the elected leaders and staff. Thus, the viability study menu will not make any recommendations. It will only describe how a sanitary authority option does or does not meet each of the evaluation criteria for.
And that's the whole.
So if you wanna remove them, let me know which ones not proposed.
The evaluation criteria are weighted toward a sewer, a joint sewer district option. That's all I'm saying.
It's up to you.
And so what they ultimately are gonna come back with, oh, is this viability study says that in order to meet these quote-unquote criteria that we've analyzed, the only option is.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
A sewer, a joint sewer district. And then you've got the issues of when you create that new government entity, now you have to get state approvals, you have to do asset transfers, you have to have um all of the financing to, to, or the authorization to finance it. A new board of directors, all of the employees and staff. I mean, there's a whole slew of stuff that goes with that that they're not even considering at this point.
But this is, this is coming out as a study. That's all gonna be dealt with later when we implement actual product. Actually, let's say we change our sewage system. All this is coming in to look at is what we got and make recommendations. All this is coming in to look at is what we got and make recommendations.
But you're using the wrong criteria, Joe. You know how.
A lot of argument is, I I understand what you're saying with criteria. I agree with what you're saying. But this is just the start for, you folks are so far advanced than what they're asking. They're just asking, can I look at this? They just wanna look in the garage and see what we have. That's all they want. And they want a period of time. But they're not saying, telling us what to do, they're making a.
Based on faulty criteria.
Well, that's, that's why we come in and can help them.
But we want the criteria to be correct upfront.
Well, this is, this is why they need our help.
Well, that's why I spent time and put together my help.
Wouldn't it be appropriate for me to make a comment?
Sure.
From what I've heard from this discussion today, I think the question the study is asking is not, is sanitary district the best option or even an option? Is is a sanitary district viable as an option? Should it be on the list? That's the question, based on what you read and what what other people have said and some of the comments that you've made, the right question to ask about this is, what they're asking is, is this a valid option?
Based on faulty criteria.
Based on the criteria they have and 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 maybe that that, based on the additional stuff that you talk about, asset transfers and all the reorganizations out, that takes it off the list. But it's not, they're not proposing that, they're not proposing instead of solutions.
Have you, have you looked at this?
I've listened to your comments and I read what, I heard what was being said and there's been no comment that counter.
What about a five-year option where it's impossible then to cite as new, they're on sewer treatment plant in five years?
That's using information that they might not have? You know that it's a practical solution? I agree, that's that's that's, there's no, there's no option in five years other than either what we have or some other direct operation. Okay, now, that might mean that a five-year option is not viable. We gotta look further down the road.
That's, that's not what they're gonna say. They're not saying it doesn't need.
Like you say that.
I, I know how this systemic partnership works and I know how they.
Let's move on.
Okay, and that's, that's all I have to say.
No, thank you for commenting, folks.
So I would have to say that, you know what, they can do whatever they want with this. I I don't, I don't believe the outcome of this, of the result because I don't believe the criteria. And so they can provide us with whatever information they want, but I don't believe the criteria is a good criteria and so, and that.
But it's gonna be too late because we're gonna have a written report that's gone to public. The county commission is gonna say, oh, look.
I think that's the problem.
Please, you guys are forgetting one very important thing. They're gonna ask you guys questions and what you think. You're gonna have plenty of opportunity to train to them where you are.
Not if the criteria are fixed in place.
But ultimately, we still have control because we have funding issues.
That's right.
We make the decision. Without funding, it goes nowhere. And if those points that you bring up aren't valid, we cut it, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, let's move forward here. Let's move forward.
Why do I even bother to spend my time looking carefully at what they're doing? If we just run out of time for a year.
Analysis and I don't, none of us have the time or the energy like you do, I'm sorry, Fran, to go through this. We have to, I think we should go forward with it and say, yes, bring us on whatever ideas you have. And then we can decide from that. And then we can say, but this doesn't matter, our criteria.
Then I think you need to let them know that they do not have the consensus of the council.
Okay, that'd be fine.
That these are, these are the criteria and you're okay with the criteria, but you don't have the consensus of the council on the criteria.
Okay, well, I think we, you should send my comment. And I think we'll try to add the criteria whether or not.
Yes.
I would say, did we do that? Kimberly?
I did.
No, wait, yeah, did, did you hear the part about send it to them with Fran's comments?
Uh, no, I just responded and just sent Fran's comments, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, because she worked hard on it and it's available.
Yeah, okay, not a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I mean.
Easy peasy.
Bring ahead with the study with Fran's comments. Okay, um, we've got.
Anybody who wants to talk to me too? I have 30 years of information.
They'll talk to you, very trust me. They'll talk to you, trust me.
Pretty strong.
Yeah.
They will definitely talk to you.
What do we need to do about the fuel and services stuff, Kim?
I just need to know we're making any changes or we're happy with Carson because they came and tested cheaper and they're closer. Okay.
And they have a shorter window for.
Yeah, okay.
We're gonna go ahead with.
You never did hear from a third one, so. Okay.
And that's who we have today, Rex Carson.
Yeah.
Um, staff reports, any updates, Kim?
Uh, just the ones that I sent to you guys this afternoon.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
What is a penalty for people using the fuel documents that sign the contract saying they weren't loading and unloading?
I think they have a violation of the ordinance penalty that we could, the council wishes didn't look upon them. It's very disturbing to hear that they've been doing this for three years. Um, but, um, and they.
Three years?
Three years is what the vote owner said.
I've been doing it that long and nobody noticed.
Well, I think somebody noticed, but I just think he chose not to do anything about it.
Thanks.
What I wanted him to do is to find out if any other votes were doing it because this primarily impacts trade winds because they hold their docs. So, but why they're not using docs one or two, I don't understand. Um, if the will of the council for me is to go ahead and go after them, I'm willing to do that. Um, we have spoken to them, we have talked to the, the owner and the vote owner and said, do not do this anymore.
I think there's gotta be penalties for people who are violating their contract.
Okay. Okay, all right, then I will send a.
Well, actually, I don't know if you guys will.
Violation letter, but the thing is, is that normally what they have to do per our code is, um, obey the violation and then there's no charge. So there's no charges right now per our code for them violating unless they don't correct their behavior and then we have, can we, you know?
So we, have we sent them a violation notice?
Well, I sent them an email saying today that, don't do that again.
And so that considered notice, if they do it again, then we can send them.
Yeah.
That's what that needs our standard of violation of.
This is why.
Yeah, a few things have changed. There's a, there used to be a fish cleaning table by Dock Four, and the juice and the fish, this used to go in the bay. But we can't put anything in the bay now, so we built that fish cleaning station over by the harbor master shed. It goes into the sanitary sewer. So, and now it's only been there for a couple of years. So they, they do come in suddenly and they're on a very calm day and they might get a fish injury, it's very rare. But this is what's happening, their docks are guarded dockside, so they're gonna come clean their fish over our fishing station. But, trade winds, yeah, because dockside has it now. The last couple of years, they've been going to dockside and they've been getting along, so they've been using dockside facilities, but for some reason now, there's some animosity or something and they're losing another place of fish and that table's gone by Dock Four, so now they're using the city's fish cleaning station. That's kinda, that's for, that's what we're having now.
So this violation notice will say, we need to take the parkas out and.
Right.
And say, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say, what? About the parkas, we can't.
Yes, they told them all that. It says that they know that it's supposed to be hauling them off the sea. Um, because I didn't realize it. And Jay told me, when he told me about this on Monday, that he had noticed that the fish trash cans and more parkas is in than he expected. And then he happened to, it happened to do it while he was there. And then they said, oh, we just did advertisements the week before.
Really? So, okay, so the, the, the notice you sent is legally a notice of violation?
Yeah, I mean, it is. It said that they did violate the ordinance, the mortgage license agreement, et cetera, et cetera. They claim not to see the signs, but the signs are pretty clear there, so.
Okay, so they.
So it covers.
It's called loading and unloading avenues of the fish.
Absolutely, I had that both.
All right. Good.
Any other updates on this stuff?
I, completely missing, is anything about the fish plant?
I sent you the structural, I went through the work and I said we were gonna discuss it, I think it's up to me.
Okay.
Okay. Um. I wanted to give you lots of time to look at it.
Yes.
A lot much.
There's a lot to that.
I know. And that's not even a deep dive, like a deep, deep dive.
That's what's divisional.
If, I was told that from John, from City Engineer, that he expected it, they all expected it to be worse. So that's good. That it's not as worse as they expected it to be, but you can clearly see there's some work that will need to be done. And, um, Mark Fett, Mark Fett, he might have an interest in using, um, having, coming to the URA, asking for URA money to tip, uh, clean up his property. Mark Fett's one next, next work.
Yeah.
So, oh, we have a lot of demands on our urban renewal fund, you know, but it's not bad, man.
Well, that was pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, if I may, just one little question.
Sure, yeah.
Um, there was under the complaint section, the code enforcement section, that there's a line item that says we're addressing several issues with complaints of people living in RVs on private property.
Yep.
Um, don't our ordinances allow that only for a specific period of time and then?
No, during construction, during construction.
During building permit.
During the construction. These are not people, these are people who are letting friends or family rent RVs and then one instance, they're not leaving.
But if the ordinance says during construction and there is no construction, then wouldn't that lead you to believe that it's not allowed?
Well, we know that already. My issue is that I'm, I'm addressing several issues. Meaning we're going through the enforcement, talking to cops, going through the, you can get them out.
So we're trying to enforce it so that they can't do.
Yes.
So that, that's.
We got, we got, we got, we got issues with squatters. Uh, people are telling us, these people live out of state and they're like, well, I can't, and they want us to evict them and I'm like, that's not our job. So this is becoming a bigger deal in this city right now.
We're at verbal threats.
People living in RVs.
Against our plan.
Yes, they have threatened against our plan.
Yeah.
Um, because he was being evicted basically off of the property of it.
I thought if somebody had guessed that came in an RV and their house was too small for the guests to.
Oh, no, they're saying such on the.
In the driveway for two, after two weeks.
Oh.
Okay.
People lose these one-nighter things too, we can't, that's.
I mean, we're, we can't enforce a night thing, but we will hear from people if you have somebody camping in an RV and your property for a few weeks. I had somebody reach out to me about losing the vacant lot. And I said, no.
Um, and we, we haven't seen a creative report in a while, but.
No, but thank you for reminding me. I did just realize today that he hadn't, he was sick today and he left today.
The, the issue with the boiler bay and the, um, they wanted to get our water service from us. Has he addressed that with them?
Uh, he has not, but he will not be, I will be doing that because we, uh, I understand we have no interest in providing any water or sewer service or water service to Deepo Bay. But he is.
Well, they're outside of our growth boundary.
He is actually leaning toward that.
Okay.
So I am going to take it from him.
Those are the last ones I had, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Um, closing public comments this evening? Do we have any public up there?
There is a few, but I don't know if they wanna speak.
I don't see any hands. Okay.
Good.
Council comments? We have a luncheon tomorrow, I hope everybody can help attend.
I'll be delivering the catering, just say that.
Oh, okay.
Was that where you work? Where? Where you're gonna, the side door.
Hmm?
Thank you, Karen.
I still leave it working cities, for small cities and, um, it'll be at 11 o'clock at the community center. And let's just provide a nice side door cafe. It should be a meeting.
Do we have to be ready?
No.
Just around 11:00 and.
What's on the agenda?
Um.
It was.
I've got tomorrow's meeting at the board.
It's only tomorrow.
And the park rite.
Diet.
Oh, the park rite was delayed.
Oh, I think you said, Mary, did you say tomorrow or Thursday?
Thursday. Tomorrow. Tomorrow is the luncheon.
Oh, never mind.
Okay, I'll make sure we swing in a term of heat on it.
I already did.
Oh, yeah, oh, good, you said it, okay.
Oh, we just set it up, listen, she's already set it up.
Oh, you already got it all.
Uh, it's about community heart and soul. Have a speaker on small cities and towns, work with them, um, relate, strengthen relationships with residents and increase resident participation in local government, uh, increase volunteerism, uh, resident driven community actions. Just good information for us.
Hopefully I can stay for a little bit.
Yeah, that would be good. And then I have flyers going around. Um, also, we have our tree lighting coming up on the 5th of downtown with Santa coming and then, um, we're doing our community pop-up holiday.
And the Grinch?
And the, uh, 11th.
I believe that you'll be.
December. Put those on your calendars. Who else has any comments to say to you? Anybody?
Are these just informational for us, Fran?
Mm-hmm. Well, next week is Thanksgiving, so everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
Yes.
I'm trying to diet right now, but we are here.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, thank you.